Call the meeting to order at six thirty.
We're gonna say six thirty.
We're gonna split the difference.
Six thirty, right.
We're gonna split the difference.
So this is the August meeting of the TIP Board of Education. I call the order and we'll start out with a pledge. So if I can have everyone arrive. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Mr. Stevens, we call roll please.
Mr. Spano.
Present.
Mr. Ventor.
Present.
Mrs. Dahl.
Here.
Mrs. Dunaway.
Here.
Mrs. Dunaway.
Present.
All present, sir.
Okay, thank you. First item on the agenda is committee reports and I would like to welcome Mr. Russ Gilmore. We appointed Russ a special meeting a week or so ago, a couple of weeks ago, as the new Miami Valley CTC Board Representative. And Russ was able to make the first meeting. So, welcome Russ. And if there's anything you'd like to say to the board, we did get, I think we all got your report that you provided as a result of attending the meeting. We appreciate that. Anything else that you'd like to address the board? Please feel free.
You'll get a monthly report from me. I'll attend a meeting each month and then I'll follow it up on the written report and a quarterly stand-up report to everyone. I was out for a tour and was absolutely amazed at the capabilities of Miami Valley Free Technology Center. I mean, they have so much going on for them, so many vocational programs that result in certification for students that are sought after by employers, can start, these are kids right out of high school that can start at forty, fifty thousand dollars a year. So it's a neat program. So you'll hear more from me as time goes on. I happen to be a CTC fan, have been for a long time. So as I learn more, you'll learn more as well.
Thank you, Russ. Appreciate it.
All right.
Thank you for coming to see me.
All right, next item is facilities, basically stadium update. And TIP Pride Association is here to give us that report. Scott George. Send these down for your folks. Two different sheets.
I think they all got.
We have copies.
Do you have copies?
Yeah, we sure do. Unless it changed, we got it Friday. Here, I'll look it up. I'll match it up.
Is this financials part of the same? Right. This was as of your August meeting, I think.
Yes, the financial one, it's probably absolutely spun up. But really, one of the things that I wanted to start with was actually a project update, really kind of looking at what's happening from a standpoint of the stadium. First thing everybody's seen, Phase One is complete. So it's complete and it's completely funded. Within Phase One was actually the field itself and the turf opening with that and a lot of infrastructure that went with it. So one, some that the field needed, but also some that's kind of setting the stage for those next phases that come. So retention walls, some stormwater drainage and things like that that's in there. The things that you may not be able to see because there's been some folks that have questioned about, okay, the cost of that turf and it wasn't just the field. There were some things that went beyond that. So that's done. It's fully funded and so we're moving forward and looking at what's next. And so what I'll tell you too is that working with Gary and the group from the school and Brunz, we've scoped out what Phase Two could look like. And I'll start by saying in Phase Two that one of the criteria for scoping that out was what do we know we can fund now? All right, instead of planning something big that we may or may not be able to attain, what can we fund now to make sure that there's something that happens this winter as well? And so the way we scoped out Phase Two is actually the new concession building, new restrooms and their storage that goes with that as well. And that would be the park side concession, park side, home side concession restrooms. And those restrooms will be dual purpose for the stadium and for the park. And so we've scoped that out. That is roughly, the approximate estimate right now is six hundred and ninety thousand dollars. I say approximate because Brunz is actually doing the detail of what is the actual cost going to be based on lots of changes in the market and things like that. So I would say that it's not going to get cheaper. So there is a possibility that the price could hold, but it won't get cheaper. Okay, as anything, as we start stretching out over time, it's gonna start extending costs. So that particular side of the project as well, there will be shared expense in that between TIP Pride and the city. So this is where city contribution, some in kind, some in dollars. And the reason for the city's contribution in that really comes down to the dual purpose in that restroom and providing newer, bigger, better facilities for the park as we create this as well. From there, we started looking at, all right, where could we go from there? So that is Phase Two, as it is scoped right now, fully funded and will happen this winter. Okay? Where we go next is what we called an expansion option that we could look at and say, if we were able to raise the funds necessary, what could we do next? And this is one that, I showed the list there that you have and that list actually gets quite long after a while. And I think you've seen that the newspaper articles cover this very well in the sense of basically it's the home side where you start getting into bleachers, press box, lights, scoreboard, all the excavation that happens on that side and things like that. And the reason why that starts getting so big is the dependencies. So if you have to demolish, do all demolition on the home side and do the excavation that's necessary on that, then do the bleachers. If you do the bleachers, you do the press box. The press box requires the new scoreboard because the electronics comes in the press box. With new bleachers, with a bigger footprint in those bleachers, you now need bigger lights, or say new lights, and they're gonna be in a different location. And with the lights, the electricity for those lights comes through the switchgear that's gonna be in the new visitors' ticket booth. So those designs require some of those dependencies. And ultimately, that next leap forward is just that. It's a leap and the approximate cost on that is gonna be one point six million dollars. And again, that's a cost that we looked at last year. Brunz is working through the details on that as well. It's not something, it is something that could possibly have some adjustment, but likely best-case scenario is if we can hold that. Okay, so that's what Phase Two would look like along with what could be an expansion option. The expansion option is not funded. All right, so there is lots of work that would have to be done to get that done. The one thing that I will talk about next will really kind of be the fundraising activity behind TIP Pride. And as you look at the financials, you'll look at those and they may not look a whole lot different than the last ones we talked about. And that's been a few months ago. Couple reasons for that. One is, I think, you're looking at fatigue in a group that's been working two years on a project. I'll also tell you, as we did our benchmarking with other schools and organizations that have tried to do this, we are still miles ahead at this point in time than what I think most people would call the standard from Boardman Schools up near Akron, where at this point in time in their project, they'd raised fifty thousand dollars. Okay, so, and then you could take a closer one in Greenville that they're about six years into their project right now and still not done. So I think we feel pretty good about where we are, but lots of work left to be done. So the other reason is we're regrouping here, looking at, we're kind of mid-campaign, what's that next plan to start that next round? We've had some suggestions and actually have looked into the idea of hiring professional fundraisers and we've put that out there and shopped that around. What we found is that this project, albeit four point nine million dollars, is big in our books and theirs it is not. They're looking for those hundred million dollar projects and beyond. And so to work a small project like this, the percentage of what those donations would be and what they would want is just too high. And being good stewards of the people's money, we just can't justify it. It's just too high, in the realm of ten to twelve percent. So we've decided not to go down that route. We've looked at another option, which was a fundraising consultant that could help us, one, do some analysis of the community, the donors, and help us identify some of those high potentials as well as put together the plan and how to raise that money with those folks. So we're still in process with that and working on getting some feedback from them and some examples of what they would do and what they might be able to present to us. Much, much, much lower cost in that that could provide us a good plan to follow. So more to come on that as we go. So, but what I'll also tell you is we've not been silent. You've just not seen a lot going on in the community. We've been hard at work and we'll talk a little bit about that in a second. So now I really wanna jump into the financial statement that you have there. And if this isn't every bit of our financial statement, it really kind of gives you the top line of where we are from a fundraising standpoint. But if anybody'd like to see the deep financials, it's public record and we can make those available to you. But ultimately, top line, you've seen this before. Like I said, it hasn't changed drastically since the last time we talked. Our target is still four point nine million dollars. To date, we have one point seven six two. That does include the seven fifty from Premier Health. It does include three fifty estimated from the city for those restrooms, and that's an estimate. There's still work, the city's gonna determine what that truly is going to be at some point in time here in the near future. In this, it also shows operating cost of four hundred and ninety-six thousand dollars. For TIP Pride, what I would tell you is that is not our operating cost. How I would break that down is four hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars in construction-related costs. So that's what we've spent project-related. What's actually been operating cost, true operating cost, is about ten thousand seven hundred dollars. So really, less than one percent of the total at this point. So what you will, what's not on here and I will tell you is we've had multiple donors that we're working with that is really at the end of the phase of really kind of making those official. So they have the contracts. They worked it through their processes of getting approval. We've sent them an invoice for the first check actually today. So for a few of those, and they're coming back when that check comes, then we will actually make those public. But what I will tell you, those that we have in the works right now that we feel very comfortable with will total somewhere in the rounds at four hundred and fifty thousand dollars, so which is not on this sheet. So there will be a significant increase in this the next time you see it. Okay, so we feel very comfortable with that. So I'll stop there, see if there's any questions about the financials on this and just a few other things that I wanna talk about from there. Nothing else?
Well, is there any way that you could maybe put Premier Health as plugged by TIP City Schools? Because I think that, I know I've been getting a lot of questions like, why isn't the school board helping? And then I have to explain the whole Premier Health money and how that, you know, worked out. Just so that those questions, you know, so that everybody knows we are working together.
And we can do that in any way the school would like that to be presented. So the answer to that is yes, and I would actually leave it back with the school, the administration and Liz and Dr. Kump about how would you like that to be presented? So, because it's absolute truth.
Right, right.
Okay.
I have a question, Scott.
Yes.
When you're referring to that six hundred and ninety thousand dollars, all of us were in that joint meeting with city council when that idea came up. Obviously, it was a fantastic idea for a lot of reasons. So when you say this six ninety, is that your half or is your half three forty-five?
That's total.
Okay, total.
So that's three forty-five. And so that's where I want, that's one thing I wanted to go to next is talking about, Tim has talked a little bit about what the city has been thinking about or proposing about possibly covering the gap for that restroom of their portion as well as TIP Pride's portion and basically funding our part of that. And the intent behind that was really if that would make a difference for us to be able to expand to that larger scope, then that would be something that they would consider doing. But ultimately, what I would tell you is right now, we have the funds to fully fund our portion of that right now. And so based on what we know is coming in this week, we will be over that hump. And so I would say that it's a great gesture, but I think in the end, we'd rather not do that. Let's keep things, let's keep things very clean and that, the city will pay their portion, we'll pay our portion, we'll be done. And then frankly, what that does too is it draws the line that says, from this point forward, TIP Pride is responsible for a hundred percent of all the funds needed to be raised to finish this project.
Yeah, and I guess I'm confused because your balance is twenty-one thousand dollars and then you're throwing around numbers, three hundred thousand, four hundred thousand. And when I look at your, you know, outstanding pledges, it's probably about forty-nine thousand to fifty-one thousand a year. So there's a big gap.
The balance of the twenty, that's cash on hand.
Okay.
So there is, take Phase One out of funds that are already allocated.
Right, that's what I'm looking at.
There is a balance of about a hundred and sixty-six thousand of funds that are unallocated.
Okay.
All right? And then when you take in what we're about to receive, we'll have everything we need to fully fund Phase Two as it is written. So they're not on there because they're not on the books yet.
It gets confusing when I see the bank balance of twenty-one thousand and then I see the one sixty-six and I start hearing all these numbers and I'm just trying to make sure they're.
That's just cash on hand. And then when I say Phase Two is fully funded, that is true. However, there is still cash that has to flow in because people have scheduled their pledges. So for instance, a Unity Bank that's pledged a hundred thousand dollars is giving us ten thousand dollars a year.
That's pretty much our.
Correct. And so we have accounts receivable coming in that will cover that as it comes in. But what we've already done is that that hundred thousand dollars is already allocated to our expenses on the field. So we know when those funds come in, we are covering that out of there.
And did you see on here, your fourth one down it says the Troy Foundation?
Yep, it's TIP City Foundation.
Yeah, because the Troy Foundation houses their account, but it's actually the TIP Foundation?
And we know as the banners start going up this week, it'll be the TIP City Foundation.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure.
Appreciate you checking in on that. So yeah, we have that taken care of. Any other questions? Okay, thank you very much. If you have something to pop off, you guys are free to call me anytime you want to answer any questions you may have. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we'll go back to the agenda here. So we're on to superintendent's report and we will start, Dr. Kump, from the opening day.
Well, opening day was August twentieth and it was a great day. I had a lot of participation from our board on that day as well. But it's always a time where our entire staff gathers together as we kind of look at what our vision, mission, our goals are for that year and introduce our new staff. And it's just a very positive piece. We usually kick that off what I call the spirit of TIP with our marching bands and the number of the students from that and also our cheerleaders and so they kind of get us all revved up. But it's a good heartwarming experience. So we had a great day. That's kind of topped off with our open houses. And so there'll be professional development and meetings on those days, but as it becomes evening, our schools K through, they've been K through six, K through five, and then our ninth through twelve had their open house on the first evening on the twentieth and then the middle school had their open house on the twenty-first. So first I wanna thank the community. Our parking lot was so full at the high school, you would've thought maybe it was graduation day. I mean, there were just a tremendous amount of people. But as I go from building to building and yes, I do go to all the buildings to just check it out for their open house, just a tremendous number of our community members and the families come out and it's an exciting evening for our students, whether walking their schedule or meeting with teachers in the evening classroom. And then wanted to mention about just back to school, we, let our nature was kind to us on the first three days. We had milder temperatures and that was very, very nice. Today was a little bit different story and I know we've got a couple more days in store. I will say that the middle school is in a joyous mode right now because with their improvements that they do have air conditioning and they are really feeling the benefit of that and they're extremely pleased and that's made a great difference. On the other hand, Nemcoke and Broadway, they are not air-conditioned. And so today, the day I checked the thermostat began at eighty degrees and that was with cooling it off and opening windows and everything as soon as they could, very, very early this morning. But as you know, the temperature didn't get quite cool last night. So it makes buildings a little bit more difficult to cool off. But humidity is one of our difficult pieces. They are rotating, there are a few areas in both Nemcoke and Broadway that has some air conditioning and so they are doing some rotation where students have a little reprieve and are able to go into what is a library area or a particular portion of the time. We keep bottled water available and then they have their own services and things that we give them frequent breaks and that nature. And then for the most part, we've had some wonderful donations and so popsicles are quite popular with elementary students and that does help for a short period of time. So I'll just say that our facility needs for our K through three remains and one of those areas is air conditioning and just being comfortable so that the instruction can be conducted and so that our students from off the board as well as their staff when they're entering school in August, September and sometimes early October, so.
Do we have a plan like Sydney, like is there like a threshold where if it's too hot? I mean, do you know what I need to have?
Yes, I know what you mean. We do a watch, I would not say that we have a specific temperature. I checked late this afternoon at the thermostats and they were at eighty-four and eighty-six depending on which room it was in. So the temperature, that's quite warm and uncomfortable in a closed classroom. I think that, you know, the air movement, we use a lot of fans in most areas, but still, sometimes you're moving hot air is what it is. And so we do watch that closely. And I have really reached out to the administration as well as several of the teachers just to keep me informed because I like to go out and walk the building and see what's happening. And it is hard, elementary children, even on a very hot day, they will go out and play at recess and they just play so hard. And you know, they're running as fast as they can and you're thinking, oh, I would conserve some of that energy or, you know, find the shade and maybe just sit and talk or, I don't know. But elementary children don't think that way. It's free time and they are energetic and they're going to spread their wings and they are going to just play. And so, so yeah, it's balancing all that is a little tricky.
Have any temporary options been explored?
They might have been explored, you bet. It's just feasibility-wise, we would've had to bring in portable units. We would've had to add either electric throughout the building to support those. I know you had mentioned at one point of generators, but with generators come noise, come doors and windows having to stay open to run the electrical cords back through the buildings. So yes, they have been explored. I worked with Greg Smith and Energy Optimizers and getting some ideas from them. And it was just one of those things that as we looked at and it just couldn't make it work, so.
I will say that the kids are resilient. I only had one child that was in Broadway and they never complained. They come, I mean, I don't, you know, it's back, I guess like back before we had air conditioning, they get used to it. Not that you wanna, you know, they're resilient.
And as I was talking to a few people today, it's not a new phenomenon for us.
Right.
Those buildings have been around since fifty-four, fifty-nine. They haven't had air. We're not the only district that has some buildings with air and some without. And we just make the best of it and hope that we don't have a prolonged heat wave. Right now, it looks like three days this week and it was going off.
And then you have really great teachers that are responsive to that situation and appropriate.
They've been through it many times and they know.
Yeah, we're really grateful.
Best practices, they're getting through it.
Really, really grateful for them and their hard work.
Yep. And I'd love to be able to provide air for everybody.
Right.
I'd really love to.
Just also wanted to mention and thank the board for their support as we opened the year under professional development. We had a couple of great experiences. Pat Quinn came from Wisconsin and he spent a day with us and did a session for, in the morning for the middle school and high school and made development examples for that age group. And then the afternoon did the K through six, should be five, K through five. And so it's just, it was all about improving instruction in the classroom for all students. So a lot about differentiation, about motivating students, simple strategies. What was exciting for me is it wasn't a packaged program. And so as I would go to an open house, I would actually see some of the things being implemented. Some of it was about graphing, about collecting data and I saw certain centers in different areas where they had gone back that afternoon then and began, you know, putting that up. And actually, when they did their little open house piece that was at the middle school where they had rotation with the classes, one of the particular teachers was saying, we'd be collecting a lot of data this year. We're gonna, you know, really be charting that and you'll see these around. And so that's uplifting and they are implementing the ideas. Another piece that you were very supportive of and I appreciate was the compass. And that was through Dr. Pamela Ellis. And she brought a book, actually she, it's her book. It's about what to know before they go, which is about college and entering. And that was for our freshman families. And she did a terrific job and once again, just a tremendous turnout and all the families that attended received one of those books. So it's nice, it's a very proactive piece where they were preparing for one of the things to help their freshmen to begin thinking about the years ahead and just their interest in connecting with that. All right, and the last one is facilities update and I think we have talked about that. I will say that I wanna thank Mr. Fister, Liz Robbins, Kim Hayden, there were several women that worked together. There was a slideshow. Mr. Fister put that together for us with subheadings, which was great, that was out for open house evening. But just the setup and kind of some signage to kind of bring some attention to that. That was running loops in all of our buildings on the opening nights. And I'll just ask, Mr. Fister, anything else you wanted to add?
Yes, certainly. I think as I mentioned at our opening day staff meeting, huge thank you to our custodial staff, remaining staff. If you would've been in that building the weekend before the teachers came back, you said, there's no way. We're not gonna be able to run time. There's just no way. In fact, that weekend, I begged my wife and she went into the building with me Saturday and Sunday. We were cleaning classrooms so that the teachers could come back. The weekend before the kids came back, we had custodians in the building. They were above and beyond. It was neat watching the pride they have in their work, just watching them get after it and making sure it was good for the teachers and the kids. So I'm very, very proud of our custodial maintenance staff. They did a good job in some really unbearable conditions in that building throughout the summer. If you weren't there on a daily basis and you just walked in at open house, pictures and words can't describe it. To walk through, every square inch of the ceiling was affected To walk through every square inch of the ceiling was affected either through line sets, um, refrigerant lines, conduit, ductwork, old coming out, new coming in. Um, what they got accomplished from June first through the middle of August, in my opinion, is amazing that we were able to open with A C in that building. Um, so I wanted to hit that, uh, then I did want to say, we still have a pretty good list of things going on that we have to get through. Um, so, I've not done a written update in a couple of weeks, so you're going to get my written update now. Um.
Verbal.
Verbal. I'll try not to be as wordy as what I can be at times. Uh, the first thing is, we still have to get, we have three larger units go up on the roof that are called DOAS, Dedicated Outdoor Air Systems. That brings in the fresh air into the building, A C building. Those are shipping this week. Uh, they're supposed to arrive at Pickle Steel sometime next week and then we'll schedule the time with Pickle Steel to lift them onto the roof, uh, some evening or some Saturday. Uh, that will finish off the A C portion of the building, once we get those up and running. Uh, middle school fire alarm, the electricians are back hitting that hard this week and next week. We had to pull them off to work on rewiring the locker rooms. I think I hit that in my update. So, the locker rooms have been rewired, we have air in there, so now the electricians are hitting the middle school fire alarm. The old fire alarm is still in place, so it's not like we don't have a fire alarm. Yes. We wouldn't be open if we didn't have a fire alarm. So, they're hitting that hard. Hopefully, within two weeks, they'll have everything in place. Uh, and then we can get it commissioned and inspected with our fire inspector and Miami County as well. So, by, I would say, second week in September, third week in September, that will be completed. Still need to get the controls completed for the HVAC system. I got access to those at the end of last week for L T Ball, uh, but they're, they weren't working until this afternoon. So, I had set a schedule for L T Ball to not run during the weekend. You know, it comes on early in the morning, goes off about four, four-thirty. I was checking the building Saturday, I was checking the building Sunday and they were running full bore all weekend. So, we're cooling a building that wasn't, needed to be cooled, but I worked with them today and those controls are working. I don't have the middle school controls in our possession yet. Um, that's a little bit more in-depth work and hopefully by the middle of next week, I'll have those. So, right now, the teachers have controls in their classrooms and they can control, um, their temperature in their classroom for the most part. Windows, if you've driven past the middle school, you've seen the semi-trailer out there. Uh, they were onsite today mobilizing and windows will start going in tomorrow. Uh, we're starting in the courtyard classroom, so the science rooms on the first floor and the sixth grade rooms on the second floor. That'll begin tomorrow. We have about three weeks' worth of work to get those windows done. Once those are complete, uh, they'll then move on to the curtain walls and the doors. So, I'm going to say we have about four to six weeks' worth of work of windows. So, end of September, beginning of, beginning of October, windows and doors at the middle school and doors at L T Ball should be done. Uh, interior lighting, we're about, about ninety percent complete at the high school and middle school combined. Uh, there's some more specialized things that we're working on right now. I say another week or so, we'll have the interior lighting done at both buildings. Exterior lighting at L T and the middle school should be starting this week, which is, uh, new building lighting on the outside plus new pole lighting in the parking lot. So, we'll start seeing some, um, some digging in the parking lot where the new poles are going. We're adding, I think it's eight poles from the middle school side all the way back towards the softball field. So, those should go in, I'm going to say probably another month or so on that work. Uh, door fobs, door sensors for this building, middle school, L T Ball and the high school. That will be starting sometime in September. Um, blast film will also be starting sometime in September. We talked about that a little bit at the opening day meeting. Um, we can share more information along the way if you want more information on that. But hopefully, again, middle September, end of September, I think the blast film, door fobs and sensors will be in place. And then last, but, last but not least is the roof work. Uh, we are probably five weeks behind schedule on roof work. Uh, weather has not been kind to us this summer. Roofers on flat roofs typically don't work if the chance of rain is thirty percent or greater. And you've seen how much rain we've had this summer, so they'll work a day or two and then they're off for two or three days. Uh, and then when they're off, and then when they're off, we've got leaks all over the place from where they have finished and where they're trying to tie into the old spots. So, we've been dealing with a lot of leaks from that. We're still dealing with some leaks from all the penetrations that we made at the middle school for all of those connections. Um, but the wet ceiling, ceiling pads are less and less each day, so I think we're making headway on it and we're getting there. So, all in all, I'm going to say, beginning of October, second week of October, we should be done.
That's impressive.
So.
That's a lot of work to get accomplished in that amount of time.
We've been, the crews, the Applied Mechanical System and Woolworth Electric have been phenomenal.
And they've been working seven days a week, have they not?
Some weeks it was seven, most weeks it was six.
Cause I drive by and there are always contractors being.
Yeah. He asked me loud, the guy from Applied Mechanical said, you all right if we don't work this coming Saturday? So, I'd like to give the crew a day off. Sure, we got A C.
Like, what, you have a family or something? You want to see them? Come on.
So.
Actually, by coincidence, my uncle ended up being on one of the crews and he lives in Arizona.
Oh.
Oh, my.
So, just literally like he called my mom, it's my mom's brother and was like, hey, I'm in Tib City. I'm working at the high school.
Yeah, I guess you know where we're going to send you.
So, yeah, they worked twelve, fourteen hours a day.
Yeah, it's crazy.
Every time I drive by, they're, they're on the work.
Yeah. Any questions that I can answer for you?
Thanks for all your hard work and the updates that you send us every week. I can tell how much time you put into those because of the amount of detail that are in those reports.
And I apologize for not having one in the past two weeks.
No, I wasn't dinging you, I'm going to say. Thank you.
Gary, we'd rather you work on the work rather than the work day.
There you go. Anytime you have questions, give me a call, email me, I'll do what I can to.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Uh, just one last thing I wanted to mention is that, uh, appreciate your support for, uh, a kind of an innovative approach uh, to our first day at the high school and it was very successful. Uh, it was called Unity Day for our sophomores and it was for our freshmen, it happened to be, uh, the freshman orientation with, uh, the linked crew, which are our student leaders that help assist with that with their advisors. Our juniors and seniors did the job settling as well as, uh, college visits. But, uh, everything worked out beautifully, as, as great as you could hope for. Uh, students very engaged and, uh, just exciting day. So, thank you for allowing us to try a new approach to that and it, it did actually quite successfully. So, that's all I have for now.
Okay. Uh, moving on is the citizens comments and I have Adrian.
Baby. Everybody says baby, but it's.
Indeed, they would like to address the board on mental health statistics and bullying.
Yeah, I saw recently, um, I think it was maybe two board member, two meetings ago or so, there was some communication and that is that just a little bit. So, kind of something I've been thinking about for a long time. Um, obviously, I work at Dayton Children's, probably getting called back in the night. But, um, so anyways, we recently, um, released our mental health statistics for the past five years. And actually, pretty, pretty disturbing. Um, two thousand twelve, we had four hundred and twenty-nine kids walk through R E D that had either attempted to kill themselves or had a plan in place. Over the last five years, that number has just continued to rise and rise and rise and rise. And working on the floor and taking care of these kids, I've, I can't tell you the countless number of children that I have taken care of. Um, the youngest one being at age seven. Um, oldest typically is eighteen, we do see kids up to the age of twenty-one. But in two thousand seventeen, we had nearly just shy of twelve hundred kids that came in and were admitted. So, I was completely shocked by the numbers, not, all right, wasn't completely shocked by the numbers, but it was however heartbroken. I mean, I didn't think it was quite going to be twelve hundred, but I can tell you, we have already hit that for two thousand eighteen and we still have how many months to go. So, obviously, I got curious as to what the root cause of some of those mental health issues, the crisis of what that could be. Um, and I did realize some time ago that I was noticing a trend with a lot of these kids. And I started getting encouraged to do some more research to see if my suspicions were correct and unfortunately, they are. Um, recent studies show that a history of bullying is the number one biggest predictor of suicidal ideation. One in five kids are verbally or physically abused. And, uh, less than twenty-five percent of those will actually report it.
I'm surprised, I'm surprised it's even twenty-five percent.
Right, exactly, exactly. And the reasons that kids don't report it are obvious. That, yeah, they're embarrassed, they're worried that things are going to get worse for them and they're worried that nobody's going to believe them because what proof do they really have? I know I've experienced an incident with my son where they set him down and it's one kid's word against the other. You know, what proof do they have? So, it's quit talking to each other, stay away from each other, go back to class. Majority of the time, it still continues, but, you know, it doesn't resolve. Cyberbullying does seem to be more prevalent only because you have physical proof. The kids have physical proof to walk in and show the administration and the staff, they're bullying me. So, it's actual physical proof. But actual research studies show that the vast majority of kids being cyberbullied are actually being more of what we would call traditional bullying. But they finally have the proof and it's probably been going on for a while. So, when you think about the one in five reported, that's only one incident. That's not to say how many times are actually being bullied because they're not reporting it every single time. So, that number is actually a lot lower when you look at it as single bullying instances. So, when I came across all the findings, you know, I decided that I have to do more. Being a pediatric nurse, I don't only advocate for my patients, but I'm advocating for all of the kids in the community. And when you look at these numbers for Dayton Children's, another thing to consider is Dayton Children's is actually a pretty small area. Because anybody south of really Springboro, Middletown area, they go to Cincinnati Children's. Anybody east of Springfield is going over to Nationwide. So, you really are looking at these numbers and I can tell you, I have taken care of kids from Tib City. They're really right here in our general population, they're in our area. So, I decided to reach out to Dr. Rainey, who is, and he's got this big, long title. He is the Executive Director of the Center of Pediatric Mental Health Resources at Dayton Children's. He has degrees from Harvard and the University of Massachusetts. He has forty-six years of experience in the mental health field and thirty-eight years at Dayton Children's as a child psychologist. I actually emailed Dr. Rainey and kind of told him what I was wanting to do with him and talking to the school board and giving some statistics. And almost immediately, I got an email back and it said, can you call me? So, I called him, we had a great conversation. Um, I basically wanted to know where I could get some actual evidence-based information on bullying in relation to the mental health statistics. He gave me some great advice and guidance for me to pass along to you guys. Um, he pointed me in the direction of ChildTrends.org. It's a website, um, that I actually encourage all of you guys to check out. It's a website that has a lot of very good evidence-based information. It's basically a lot of research studies and statistics that have been done across the country and it's also state-oriented. And it's kind of compiled all of those into one website. So, you've also, you have your C D C, you have the Ohio Department of Health, you have all of those organizations along with like the child, the Academy of Child Psychiatry and all of that.
What was the website again?
It's ChildTrends.org. But one of the articles, and I dug through, they've got different categories and stuff that you can look at. So, I specifically looked at bullying with mental health. And there's one article in particular that I found to be very informative. Um, and it really resonated to my thoughts on the bullying and the mental health from what I have seen taking care of these kids. Um, cause I spend a lot of time with these kids, they're one-on-one. They have to have somebody in the room with them twenty-four, seven, whether it be the nurse or the P C A. They're not allowed to be locked alone because they're on suicide watch. And they're there for days, sometimes weeks, because they have to be transferred into a mental health inpatient facility and we don't have one of those around here. Our, we have one in Columbus and it's almost always full. And then we have Cincinnati, we actually send them as far as Indiana and Kentucky. But they have to go to an inpatient because we don't have the, the means of providing the care that they have to have. So, they have to go to there for at least probably three days, but they're at our facility usually a lot longer because they're waiting on placement. Um, we currently are working on building a mental health inpatient. Hopefully, next year it'll be open and we will have about twenty-four beds, but it's going to be full all the time. I mean, it's, yeah, it's going to be hard, but it's something. Um.
What's the article?
Yeah, what's the article?
Um, the article is, it's, um, I'm sorry, I didn't actually get the name of it. But it is, it basically, it states that the anti-bullying assemblies, speakers and campaigns, they're just, they're not effective to prevent bullying. You can have, or nor are the zero tolerance policies because all that's doing is removing the students. It is not effective because it's not addressing the underlying issues of why the child is doing what they're doing. A lot of times, the kids that are doing the bullying are bullied themselves. So, the underlying problem is what has to be worked up. It's kind of like these assemblies, they might put a Band-Aid on the wound for a short amount of time. The kids might be friends for a day or two because they are remembering what that speaker said or, you know, but then something's going to happen. It's going to trigger the root cause, that Band-Aid's going to come off and things are just going to start happening all over again. So, we need to be more accountable as ourselves. We can't improve the problem if we don't acknowledge that we have one. And looking at the statistics of the one in five. I estimated, we have, I estimated nearly six hundred kids for the middle school, six, sevens and eights, which is a little, I think, a little bit of a low number. I think some of the classes are just a little over two hundred. But if one in five students are being bullied off of this statistics and only twenty-five percent of them are reported, and this is just for one, one incident of bullying, we should have had a minimum of thirty reported bullying incidents to the state. Because any incident that is considered bullying, you guys know that, has to be reported to the state. For the middle school, for the entire school year of two thousand sixteen, two thousand seventeen, we only had five. And of those, I believe, two of them were the social, the cyberbullying, the social media that kids get into. So, personally for me, this is very concerning because these numbers show that either students are not reporting being bullied, which means they probably feel that there's no point because things are just going to get worse or nothing's going to be done. Or, we're just not doing our jobs in reporting. We're not deeming it as a bullying report for whatever reason, even though there's, there's very strict guidelines on what is bullying and what is not. Um, either way, it's not in alignment with the district's vision statement of being respectful, being responsible and having integrity. We ourselves, as administration, staff and community, we have to work together to figure out a way to make the changes. Yeah, we all have to work together and we've got to find the root cause. Yeah, we can't, it's, yeah. And every kid is different, so, and I know it's hard to reach each individual kid, but I think the umbrella.
Could you send us the article that had the.
Yeah, yeah, it's right, it's right on that Child Trends too, but yeah, absolutely.
I mean, I'm on that website right now, looking at.
Yeah, I did in the search, I typed in, it was just typed in bullying and it goes.
Hundred and twenty results for bullying.
Yeah, right, right. But there is, there's that one right in there that goes in. Um, but I asked Dr. Rainey, I, you know, what advice or guidance would you give me to pass along? And he's, and he does work a lot closely, I know he's worked a lot with Oakwood, with Oakwood schools, uh, along with a lot of several other districts. And he says, the schools that make, set and stick with policies that work are the ones that see a very dramatic decrease in bullying. And to effectively address and prevent bullying, communities should engage in a coordinated effort to examine the issue within their own population and provide evidence-based supports for those engaged in bullying behavior as well as those being targeted. So, lastly, I would just like to say that I don't know how we can fix the problem, I really don't. Um, but I do know that we, as a community, need to at least acknowledge the existence of the problem and work together to find a solution that works. Because the policies and procedures that we have in place currently obviously are not getting done. And I personally don't want to see any more kids on my floor from, especially from Tib, but really from anywhere. And until we start dealing with the root causes of this, it's just going to continue to grow. That's it.
Thank you, Adrian, that was powerful. Thank you, thank you so much.
All right, let's move right into the agenda. Next thing is President's Comments. And let me just say, uh, a few things. First, uh, seemed like a very short summer break to me, we're back in school. Um, welcome everyone back. It was after the teacher's first day. Um, a lot of excitement in the air, uh, all the teachers there. It was, it was pretty exciting, um, so, uh, appreciate their commitment and work in it a, a, as teachers, uh, an inspiration for our students. Students also seem to be very excited, uh, school was back. Of course, that's all relative, probably based on a little bit of age, being back and, and being excited, but, uh, new year, uh, new beginnings, so that was, that was exciting. At this time of the year, we also kick off a number of, uh, campaigns. One of the campaigns is fundraising for athletics. Um, we mentioned at the last meeting that, uh, we had a, uh, a door-to-door campaign. It was successful, so I'd like to thank the community for, uh, their support, uh, for the athletics and the athletic campaign. Um, this past weekend, a band had a fundraiser with mattress sales, also another successful campaign. Stopped in there at the end of the show and, uh, it was, uh, it was a great campaign. They, they raised so much needed money for their program. So, again, the community, thank you. You know, I was in the buildings about, the buildings that we did renovations, uh, the first week of August and I can't say enough about the work that Gary has done, um, and, uh, the rest of the administration that supported Gary, um, specifically the, uh, our custodial staff. When I walked through the building, um, in, in August, uh, just amazing amount of work that was being done. I mean, all the ceilings that were ripped up, all the holes that were bored, um, to put all the pipes through and run all the wiring through and just, I, I was absolutely amazed that we could take on a project like that, um, in a, in a summertime frame and, and get that done. Um, and so, my hat's off to Gary and, and the staff to be able to, to accomplish all of that. It was, uh, it, it was a great effort, uh, and, and great for our students and for our staff, so, thank you. The, uh, the next thing that, uh, I would like to say is, we opened up football season last week. Um, and, uh, as, uh, we were just told a little bit ago about the field being complete. The students got to play their first game out there. Um, it was exciting. Um, it was, uh, I, I could see excitement, uh, down there on the field. It was out there for meet the teams and they all got to walk on that field and be a part of. It was out there for meet the teams and they all got to walk on that field and be a part of that. It was, it was pretty neat. So again, thank you to the community for your support. Your support's still going to be needed as we move forward, but it's exciting, some of the things that are happening in the community. So come November, we're going to need that support again. We have a bonding or a levy issue, a permanent improvement issue that will be on the ballot. We're going to need that community support for that permanent improvement issue. It is no more taxes. And it's what has made possible some of the things that we did this summer. So please come out and, and support that. See that that's out there and know where your money is being spent. So that's all I have for the moment for President's comments.
Would you have an action item, Sam?
Pardon?
Would you have an action item for selecting a representative for the OSBA conference?
Oh, okay. Yes. We got OSBA conference coming up the end of November. We need to appoint a delegate for that OSBA conference. There is a meeting that a delegate must attend, or I say must attend. The district is, should attend and, and cast, they vote. Usually they have a change in their platform for the congressional, the state congressional body that they move or advance forward through the state. And so that attendee attends that and votes to support or, or decline support for that platform. So I have done that the last two years, I believe, as, as the delegate. And I'm happy to do it again, but it may be time for someone else to look at attending. It is a commitment that you, I think it's Monday, around one or two o'clock. I got the schedule at home. We all should have got a schedule for, for the OSBA conference for that event, but I would entertain, would like to entertain anyone that is interested in, in maybe taking on that responsibility.
Does it require traveling to Columbus to sit in these meetings? Is it?
It's a one-time meeting. The juror's there as, as a delegate for that meeting. During Capitol Conference. You got, you attend during Capitol Conference and meetings.
The delegate will receive the documents in the mail for their review beforehand. And during the conference, just go and attend that.
Is that usually changes to the OSBA's platform?
Yes. Anyone have interest? All right. I'm happy to do it again. Wanted to give opportunity here for, for somebody else to do it, if, if there was an interest. So.
Sounds like you're doing a great job of it. He does.
Do you have a t-shirt or anything?
You can extra, you can extra ribbon.
Can you tell Corinne that she can meet Goldie Holmes? She'll do it.
Oh, no, it's, they gotta be there. I forgot.
Not you, that one.
She just wants to meet Goldie Holmes.
So bad.
She'll be there for that weekend or at least her, her presentation.
I'm so excited about that. Maybe she'll do like an overboarding action.
What if we arrange for her to sign your ribbon?
Oh, thank you.
Well, we're working on that if you volunteer. How's that?
Do we need a motion for that?
We haven't done a motion in the past. Carrie put one in, but if we just have somebody that's interested in volunteering for that, we'll just let that person. Then we also have to have an alternate.
Oh, I think I'm always the alternate every year.
So you've been the alternate.
I'm always the alternate. Listen, when I'm vice president, I'll step up. How's that? Oh, okay. So I'm safe. That'll never happen. Never know. Things change.
All right, an alternate? So are you the delegate?
It's me every year. It's always Sam and I, pretty much, I think, all three years.
And we appreciate you guys doing it.
Well, Sam does it. So I mean, hey, thank you for not getting sick, by the way. I'm your girl. If you get sick.
Change yourself.
Sam gets a flat tire. I'm going.
Don't eat the fish that I'm pouring.
No, definitely.
All right.
Mr. Spahn, before we go on, I just, I, I know what I thought the intention was, but I just wanted to clarify that for the November levy, it's no new taxes. I, I just want to make sure that, that that was clear.
No new taxes.
You said no taxes and I didn't want to, I didn't want to like be all jumping in on, but yeah.
You said no addition. Just for clarity before we move on. So, thank you.
Right.
Renewal.
Yeah, there you go. No new taxes. Continuing renewal, no new taxes.
Keep investing in our schools.
Yeah, I have things for the delegates to sign.
Sure. My signature is very valuable at the moment. All right. I think we're to the point of prior meeting minutes. We should have a few minutes here to approve. We had a couple special meetings as well as our July regular meeting. We got them all in one package. You want to take them all together? Do you want to take them one at a time?
Stay them together.
So it's your own and I can find the typos anyway, so.
Oh, I found, I found one typo.
Oh, come on. You are stepping up to me tonight.
I know. Do you want, do you want to know my typo, the special meeting?
No, I'd like a motion first.
She's so excited.
Thank you, Andy.
I'll second.
So I have a motion and a second. Andy and Teresa. All right. So now we'll take corrections to the minutes.
Do you have a correction, Corinne?
I do have a correction. At our early meeting, it was held at the high school and not the Board of Education.
Oh, hey, look at you. And it was for 6:00 AM even.
Good one.
He typed these at 6:00 AM, so he's still.
All right, other corrections.
I thought you did a nice job on it, Dave.
Yeah.
Thank you.
I'm telling you, man, this thing helps me crank them out.
It's getting harder and harder for us to find.
Oh, believe me. I'll put them in there for you.
It's like iSpy.
All right. Ready to vote based on one correction?
Yeah.
Call roll, please.
Mr. Venters?
Yes.
Mrs. Dunaway?
Yes.
Mrs. Dahl?
Yes.
Mrs. Heatherly?
Yes.
Mr. Spano?
Yes, that motion is approved. All right, we're moving on to the treasures report. Monthly report. Looking for a motion to approve.
I'll move.
Second.
Got a motion and a second from Corinne and Teresa. Dave, what would you like to tell us about the treasures report?
It looks so much different when you're at the beginning of the year rather than the end of the year, you know? Nothing too, there was nothing too crazy in this report. I, I hope you all liked the cover.
I saw it.
We stared a little bit on that one.
I don't like it.
We brought back, we have brought back the TIB City Devil.
I saw that. I was like, oh, these wonderful other things.
So, yeah, so that was my, every year I picked a new icon for it and this one had to be there.
I had a high school flashback. I loved it.
So yes, we have been able to reconcile our interest amounts. I mean, with a good economy, we are still doing very well. I point that out every month, but you know, it's just great to see these rates coming back and having our money work for us rather than have, doing nothing for us. So I have had two of our investments mature this August. So you will see some new numbers next month. We renewed the CD at a higher rate. So that's always good. So we should see some higher interest rates as well as they continue to increase. One thing of note on the three-year history report, you will notice that general property taxes was over $4 million for the month of July this year. Previous two years, they were zero and that's because we did do an advance of our taxes. That's so we could capitalize on having that in our bank account so that we could receive more interest on that. So. Other than that, everything else, if you look at these line items, they're really consistent from year to year. So just slight increases per costs and, but I will say our supplies and materials look a little higher this year. That's because we bought a lot of our curriculum in July. Last year we were buying it in August. So. Anyway, or we were paying for it in August last year. Doesn't mean we didn't get it in July. Are there any questions that board members may have for me on the report? I guess I will point out the second to last page, the little bar graph keeps getting bigger. So it's always good to see.
All right. Call roll, please.
Mrs. Dahl?
Yes.
Mrs. Dunaway?
Yes.
Mrs. Heatherly?
Yes.
Mr. Spano?
Yes.
Mr. Venters?
Yes.
Treasures report is approved. Next thing is the fiscal year 19 appropriation amendments. Need a motion?
I'll make a motion. Second.
Have a motion and a second. Moving, Joellen and, and Teresa. Dave, what would you like to tell us about appropriation changes?
Oh, I, I started just putting down what they are. I think I'm putting a little bit more description in there now if you pull up the attachment, but we had some slight increases. The biggest were in Fund 16 and Fund 300. Fund 16 is our emergency levy fund and we're using that to help fund a new PA system. That was not out of that one? What was that? Oh, I guess I wrote it down.
We initially were going to take it out of there.
Right. It's picking up Qualtrics, Naviance, the district's portions. Also, we've been paying the premier health trainer from that fund and our iReady software district portion. So we, we do have a student fee that pays for some of the iReady fees, but it is a large expense. So we also cover that as well. And then we've had some more tiny house sale is included in there. And two of our sports teams turned in their budgets. And the boys' basketball actually had a very large budget they've turned down. So other than that, nothing too crazy. Did pay out some, some scholarships too. So had to put those on there. Any other questions?
Call roll, please.
Mrs. Heatherly?
Yes.
Mrs. Dunaway?
Yes.
Mrs. Dahl?
Yes.
Mr. Spano?
Yes.
Mr. Venters?
Yes.
The appropriation limits are approved. Next item is the then and now. Your motion?
So moved.
Second.
So a motion and a second. Andy and Teresa.
There it is. There is one item on the then and now. And I have to hang my head on this one because it's mine. You know, I, the board in June approved the contract with Meta Solutions for our software. And, and I put down a Monday work date of 7/2 because 7/2 is a Monday. It's a workday. They invoiced us on 7/1. So next year I know, doesn't matter what day of the week the first falls on, I'm 7/1. That's my, that's my period date. So. Anyway, I, I don't think the auditors will find any issues with this, but I'm just again being safe rather than sorry. Have the board prove it.
Any questions? Call roll, please.
Mr. Venters?
Yes.
Mrs. Dunaway?
Yes.
Mrs. Dahl?
Yes.
Mrs. Heatherly?
Yes.
Mr. Spano?
Yes, that motion is approved. All right, moving on, old business, permanent improvement levy discussion.
Oh, sorry, go ahead.
I don't know. You have something to report?
I'll, I'll start it off and then I'll, I'll pass it off. Just that, the, the aspect of November is coming our way. We find ourselves here just at, near the beginning of September. And so ultimately the group, there has been those that have interest in the levy and wanting to serve in a volunteer basis that they have joined together. Still looking for a point person for that and would welcome somebody that may want to step up to do that. Have inquired and there aren't, once again, a number of people that are willing to serve in multiple capacities, but not necessarily as a point person. So with that being said, I'll kind of pass it to your light, Ron.
So we have been working on gallery volunteers to lead up aspects of a campaign. But as Dr. Combs said, we would be interested in finding a person to lead and then be able to delegate to those volunteers who have stepped into those volunteer roles. So far, it seems that there is interest in the campaign including an information sharing, marketing aspect through social media, a letter writing campaign to the Gazette and Troy Daily News. That would also include the idea of having some man on the street videos done to help educate about the levy campaign and aspects of the levy. And those would be shared on social media. We have reserved space to have a banner across Main Street. And we have some volunteers to help canvas, to do phone calling, to do events and to do just a variety of campaign tasks. But again, without a leader, it's hard to delegate and to set some of those steps into motion. A lot of those things could be happening now. We have a healthy budget thanks to our fundraising from the last campaign. And we have some ideas that we'd like to set forth, including a campaign strategy. And so far we're looking at invest in excellence, support to today's schools. We have some just a number of people who have sort of lined up to help, but nobody really to lead us. So, so we meet on Tuesdays in the library at 6:30 at night. So anyone who might be interested in joining us and volunteering, we certainly welcome volunteers to step into that role or any volunteer role.
All right. Thank you. And I'm gonna retread, go back on the agenda a little bit on facilities. We have this week a meeting scheduled with the Ohio Facilities Commission Wednesday to do an assessment of LT Ball. We are continuing to have discussions with the Ohio Facilities Commission. Our LP application was approved. We had a special meeting a number of weeks back about putting in an application for that program. The state has approved that program, meaning that we are locked in to that program at a 31% funding from the state. Will not necessarily be available at the time that we start the project. As part of the LTP program is that they promise that as your number comes up, they will fund the program, but not until that time. The district would be responsible for everything that was required to make the, make the, to execute the master plan and then reimburse from the state. So again, next few steps to that is this visit by the, by the OFCC to look at LT Ball. That'll happen Wednesday. There'll be another report after that. So we're excited about the opportunities there with regard to this and the fact that we've been able to have some state funding or will have state funding as part of the program. We have a lot of work to deal with regard to completing our master facilities plan, with regard to coming up with the actual costs and what we, what we were, what we would build, getting that approved by the board and, and by the state. So there will be much activity taking place with regard to that subject as well in the next upcoming months. So stay tuned, get involved and be watching for more news about new facilities.
So in your previous experience with, with folks that'll be coming on Wednesday, do you have any idea how long it takes to get some sort of report back? Do you get the report on, onsite with, when you're walking through with them? Do you get the report onsite when you're walking through with them? And how do you then use that information then to start applying it to like real numbers? How do you start crunching those numbers? And I guess where I'm going with these questions is what would be the timeframe of what to expect? Because then I, I think we as a board need to come together and answer some pretty critical questions to see how we will move forward from there on. And not to confuse this issue with what's happening in November.
Correct.
Oftentimes, there are a lot of questions. I know that we've all shared in receiving questions from the community about what to expect next. So we probably need to talk about how do we make sure that we stay on message for the permanent improvement, no new taxes in November, and still then communicate information about what potential project that might result from the assessment that's happening and the participation in this program.
So I agree with the comments you made there at the end especially. As far as timelines, we did have an assessment done a few years back. As I recall, I attended that assessment or walkthrough of L T Ball. We basically got a verbal that day that that building was, would meet or satisfy or could be considered as part of the master facilities plan. I don't know that we got a written report for thirty or sixty days afterwards. But again, I've got a verbal commitment that we would get that written, written report stating that. Mike Richley, who has been our architect through a number of these projects, will be attending Wednesday. Mike Richley will, based on what we're told there, has done some work with a pre-K through five addition to the L T Ball. I believe we still have him on contract for some work to be done with regard to this planning. And we will lean on him or actually pay him to continue some work on that. And some of that will include the plans and costs associated with that. In fact, I think he's gonna have some data for us on Wednesday that we will talk about and communicate about. So we will probably, I would think in the next sixty days, have some more information that the board would be able to evaluate with regard to a pre-K through five cost that might be associated with that, at least some rough figures with regard to that. And then take whatever actions we want to proceed with as that goes. There is a deadline that we have as far as putting a bond issue on a ballot next year. I believe we've got, have two readings of that to make that happen. And Mr. Stevens will keep us straight on what those dates are.
That will want to be done in January.
So that would be drop dead dates, if you would, for getting them on a ballot in the first opportunity in twenty nineteen. So obviously, we want to be a little bit ahead of that drop dead date. But yes, we, those would be the dates that we would have at this point.
I, go ahead, sorry. Do you want to go first? Oh, well, one thing I did want to add is we did meet with, we have a new person now, Eugene, about two or three weeks ago. And we sort of, with Mike Richley, explained to him the plan that we presented, I think twice now, at L T Ball to the community. The community really seemed to embrace our, I don't want to say solution, but kind of compromise. And Eugene had his own thoughts on that. So we just don't want people to think that we, meaning the district or the board, said, oh, hey, we're not gonna do that now. In order to get that thirty-one percent L P, it all depends on what Eugene says on Wednesday when we meet with him. So if we do change, it's not because all of a sudden, like in the Broadway situation where everyone thought we were going one direction and then everyone said, oh, at the last minute, you change your plan. It'll be very clear to the public, we'll let them know that we want the thirty-one percent L P. And Eugene said, if you want the money, then X, Y, Z. But we have made it very clear what our community has already decided on. So we'll just wait and see what happens on Wednesday.
Well, that leads right into the question, at what point will we be doing some community engagement to help educate the community about what the options are, what the associated costs would be, specifically, what is the project? You know, what would be the features of project? What is the cost with and without the thirty-one percent? What would be the timeframe? Those questions all have to be answered.
Sure.
Including the answer, the question that I know we cannot answer, which is what would happen to the Broadway site? And so I'm hoping that we can ensure that we engage the community, but also invite city council to help shoulder some of those questions. So we need, we as a board.
If Eugene says, hey, this looks great, you guys are on track, then it's gonna be a more of a fast crack, a fast crack approach. But if he says, hey, timeout, you're not gonna be able to do what you think you're gonna do, then it's gonna be a lot longer of a process. So really, I don't know if we can really answer that question, because until we meet with Eugene and he either approves what we're, what we're thinking or says no, then we're not really having information. Does that, does that, okay?
The bottom line is we gotta get a master facilities plan in place and that's gonna get approved by the state. So I mean, until we get that approved by the state, they'll get their blessing. It's gonna be difficult to really lay out exactly. I mean, we can, we can get some costs of what we think it is, but we really can't go forward with promoting that until the state approves the plan.
So are you suggesting that we table any community engagement sessions until we have that sort of package together? Do we want to use the opportunities to continue engaging with community, which was a commitment of our board that we do that routinely? Is that something we'd like to move forward with and just do some general education about school finance, about how schools are funded? Would we like to use the opportunity for that? I'd sort of like this to follow through on what we committed to doing and use the opportunity to engage with the community and educate them about some general information if we don't have specifics. And then continue to talk about this program and what, where we're at with the process.
Specifically, I brought this up now to talk about basically engaging the community a little bit, letting them know where we're at and how things are going. To have a engagement session outside of a board meeting is probably in order, probably after this meeting. And we need some little time to plan to that. Give Mr. Richley an opportunity to work some numbers and give us some ideas about that. I would say though, sometime mid fall is gonna be a good time to start a community engagement program, provided we've got a master facilities plan that the state is, is giving us some indication that they would approve. So that would be where I'm at as far as my position on how soon we would go forward to the community outside of updates in a board meeting.
And not just to you, Sam, but to everyone, thoughts on how to engage the community? Traditionally, we've had some meetings that we've advertised and had some attendance at our schools. What are some other ways that we would pursue engaging and sharing information?
Is this something we could discuss at work sessions here?
Yeah, I think we've got a work session in a couple of weeks. That might be a good topic for that work session.
Right.
Right, we have a work session.
And we'll have more information by then, because it'll be after Wednesday, so.
It's still gonna take time to develop those numbers.
It is gonna take some.
Right, she just wants to know how we're gonna engage the community. I said, is there, can we just table that into the work session?
Oh, I understand.
Okay, sorry.
I think the real point to her comment is we all need to be thinking about community engagement and what that means and how we go about making that engagement with the community. We can, you know, talk about, think about those things and be ready for discussion.
For the work session, yeah, have all, have all ideas. Right. Because one thing we heard, one thing we learned from the Broadway was they want the state money. And thirty-one percent is the biggest portion that we've ever been offered. So we'll have to educate the community on that and, yeah, discuss that.
I think we have some information now about the program that might be, you know, helpful to continue getting that information out. There, there's also, you know, there can be, Mr. Stevens shared with us what we, what schools is doing as far as a commitment to a monthly mailer that goes to all the residents. That might be one way to share that information.
Did you get an, did you get a cost on that, Dave? Of what the monthly mailers did cost them?
She did not give me an accurate cost. She gave me an estimated cost.
Okay, right.
I'm not gonna share an estimated cost.
Oh, yeah, that's fine.
We're not asking you to. I guess I'm asking us to look at non-traditional and traditional ways that we've engaged in the past and how we might be able to get information out here. Because this is about a project that will then probably lead to a bond. But right now, I think we need to be in the education knowledge portion of helping everybody understand what the project is, rather than just focusing on when will we put a bond levy on? Because that's often the question I think we're asked, but we need to make sure that we're stepping back and being sure what the project really is going to be.
I'm a big fan of those, like you said, mail on the street videos. I think those are super effective.
I agree.
To have those on the district website about the project, we can have one on L P, one on, you know, the different topics. Those are hugely effective. It enriches a large audience and cost is extremely cost effective. There's no mailing cost, there's no man hours and getting, you know, remember getting the postcards just right for the left, that's so time consuming. So I would be a big fan of.
But I just want to make sure that I'm clear that we're talking about this as a project, which is separate from the, from the improvement levy in November. So I don't want to make sure that we're not confusing anybody, but we have, you know, there's a levy campaign committee that can work on making sure that we pass the levy and we can all help and support that as well. But we've got a lot of work ahead of us, just working on our master facility plan and how to make sure people are understanding what we're doing as a board.
So add it to the work session, Sam?
That's what I'm thinking.
Okay.
So four hours.
All right, I think I'm ready to move on to new business.
All right, item A, approval of four percent increase in base salary for Dr. Fred Kump, superintendent of schools for the two thousand eighteen nineteen school year retroactive to July first, two thousand eighteen.
Do I need a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Second.
A motion and a second from Jo Ellen and Andy. Discussion? Call roll please.
Mrs. Heatherly.
Yes.
Mr. Venters.
Yes.
Mrs. Dahl.
Yes.
Mrs. Dunaway.
No.
Mr. Spano.
Yes. Motion is approved.
Item B. Approval of a four percent increase in contract salary for Doctor, excuse me, Mr. Dave Stevens, treasurer of schools for the two thousand eighteen nineteen school year retroactive to August first, two thousand eighteen.
Need a motion?
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
Have a motion and a second, Andy and Jo Ellen. Any discussion? Call roll please.
Mr. Venters.
Yes.
Mrs. Heatherly.
Yes.
Mrs. Dahl.
Yes.
Mrs. Dunaway.
Yes.
Mr. Spano.
Yes, that motion is approved.
Item C, recommend, recommend approval to accept the following resignations as per the agenda.
I'll make, go ahead.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second. So have a motion and a second from Jo Ellen and Andy. Any discussion? Call roll please.
Mrs. Heatherly.
Yes.
Mr. Venters.
Yes.
Mrs. Dahl.
Yes.
Mrs. Dunaway.
Yes.
Mr. Spano.
Yes, that motion is approved.
Item D, approval to update Chris Zink's administrative contract from one-year contract to a two-year contract.
Motion?
I'll make the motion.
Second.
I got a motion and a second, Teresa and Andy. Any discussion?
So we give first year administrators two-year contracts?
Yes.
And, and for like?
That's good protocol. I can, I believe every staff, every current administrator without Mr. Zink, who we were adjusting here, that as they were hired on for their first contract, it was two years for the first contract.
Because I was just looking at a lot of districts that surround us and for teachers and administrators, their first year in a new district, they only do one year. So I didn't know if there was like, other than we've done it in the past, I didn't know if there was a reason why we do two-year initial contracts.
I guess protocol is, we have done that in the past and have for a number of years. I understand about the one-year contract, that's gonna be really connected with our teaching staff to the resident educator program. That's all, that's four years at one year.
Are there advantages or disadvantages to go into one year?
Well, the one thing that, because this question was approached and I was just expressing that, you know, during the first year, particularly, you know, as an assistant, there is a lot of mentoring that takes place. So it's quite an investment for Mr. Verhoff during his first year. And I think that then that would be, the second year would be in place that would be ready to have some of the initiation and the leadership roles that Mr. Zink then would be able to do. So it's, in a sense, it's a commitment of the district to the individual that there's a two-year piece where the first one, there's a lot of mentoring. In the second year, there's more initiation. Also think that in cases such as Mr. Zink, where he brings nineteen years of experience, that it's a commitment to him because he is stepping away from a, obviously a solid position and that then he has two years to become active, engaged and improve himself as a young administrator.
I just think in general employment, you have a year probation. You might have a six-month probation. Most administrative positions have a nine-month till one-year contract. And so I, it's not about Mr. Zink. You're explaining that this has been the protocol and I don't have a problem with this. What I'm suggesting is that we should probably look at this as a policy.
And you.
I recognize his years of service as a teacher. He's moving into administrative position. I have faith in his capacity. I just wonder, you know, why we're doing a two-year commitment when generally, let's say, we give one year. Because when we have teachers come in that are outside of the R E S A, we don't give them more than one year initially, do we?
I think that's not, I think it's, first year's a one year.
It's always a one year. Yeah, I don't really think, I agree with your comments completely, Jo Ellen, that it's a, generally seen as a probationary. Let's see if this is gonna work for both of us.
So is this something we could work on going forward as a board, maybe to have a discussion, you know, what we think?
Absolutely. Is this, is it tied to policy or is it?
Well, tied to process.
It's process.
Just a practice.
Correct.
It's just the way it's always been.
There's no policy that we have to enforce there.
Oh, right, it's just what, right.
I mean, I guess to, for, to shape that discussion, Corinne said she did a little research on what some other districts in the area did. It might be interesting to have that information for our discussion so that we can see what the norm is, if there is a norm.
Yeah, sure.
Any other discussion?
So when should we expect that? What's realistic to hear back on that?
Well, I don't think we're gonna be hiring any administrators soon. Luckily, we're full.
Well, there's no rush.
So let's get past Wednesday, let's get past November and then, you know what I'm saying?
I just don't want to get lost.
Right, 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 yeah, no, I understand.
I think that would probably be in December or January, so that as we move into spring, if there is any change or movement, that we will have, have the discussion and it's really not connected to an individual. It's more of a pro, it's, it's a new protocol that's being put forward, yeah.
This is not about Mr. Zink. Right, absolutely.
Any other discussion? Call roll please.
Mrs. Dunaway.
Yes.
Mr. Venters.
Yes.
Mrs. Dahl.
Yes.
Mrs. Heatherly.
Yes.
Mr. Spano.
Yes, that motion is approved.
Item E, approval of the following Title One teachers for the following, for the two thousand eighteen nineteen school year attending proper certifications and paperwork. That's Quinn Miller at L T Ball for Title One reading and Megan Von Vech, Vanish, Vanish at Meta Copic as the Title One reading.
I'll move.
Second.
Motion and a second, we got Corinne and Teresa. Any discussion? Call roll please.
Mrs. Dahl.
Yes.
Mrs. Dunaway.
Yes.
Mrs. Heatherly.
Yes.
Mr. Spano.
Yes.
Mr. Venters.
Yes.
That motion is approved.
Item F, approval of the following certified teachers for the two thousand eighteen nineteen after-school supervision, as per the agenda.
I'll move.
I'll second, a motion and a second, Corinne and myself, discussion? Call roll.
Mrs. Dahl.
Yes.
Mr. Spano.
Yes.
Mrs. Dunaway.
Yes.
Mrs. Heatherly.
Yes.
Mr. Venters.
Yes.
That motion is approved.
Item G, approval to employ the following supplemental positions for the two thousand eighteen nineteen school year pending proper certification and paperwork.
I'll make a motion.
Second.
Got a motion and a second, Andy and Corinne, any discussion? Call roll, please.
Mr. Venters.
Yes.
Mrs. Dahl.
Yes.
Mrs. Dunaway.
Yes.
Mrs. Heatherly.
Yes.
Mr. Spano.
Yes, that motion is approved.
Item H, approval to employ the following substitute positions for the two thousand eighteen nineteen school year pending proper certification and paperwork.
I'll move.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, Corinne and Andy, any discussion? Call roll, please.
Mrs. Dahl.
Yes.
Mr. Venters.
Yes.
Mrs. Dunaway.
Yes.
Mrs. Heatherly.
Yes.
Mr. Spano.
Yes, that motion is approved.
Item I, approval of the following staff for the two thousand eighteen nineteen LPDC committee, as per the agenda.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
Got a motion and a second, myself and Corinne, discussion?
Is this required, it's required, right?
Yes, it is.
Yeah, I thought it was, okay.
For each district and that's, that's really our licensing.
Yes, okay, got it.
District committee.
Yep.
Any other questions? Call roll, Mr. Spano.
Yes.
Mrs. Dahl.
Yes.
Mrs. Dunaway.
Yes.
Mrs. Heatherly.
Yes.
Mr. Venters.
Yes.
That motion is approved.
Item J, approval of the following resident educator mentors for the two thousand eighteen nineteen school year, as per the agenda.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
Got a motion and a second, myself and Joanne, any discussion? Call roll, please.
Mr. Spano.
Yes.
Mrs. Heatherly.
Yes.
Mrs. Dahl.
Yes.
Mrs. Dunaway.
Yes.
Mr. Spano, uh, Mr. Venters.
Yes.
That motion is approved.
Item K, approval of the following Science Curriculum Committee members for the two thousand eighteen nineteen school year, as per the agenda.
Need a motion?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
Got a motion and a second, Andy and Teresa, questions?
I have a question.
Okay.
Galen, when did we go from one building rep to one per grade? I know that was sort of recent.
Well, I went back to the last science adoption and it was the same.
Right, I knew that.
Which is then prior to me.
Okay.
So, um, it gives us a good overview of each one and I did reduce it just a little bit this time, the science. And because I doubled up with some people that have, Cassie Shock is also a gifted coordinator, so she's one of my grade level people.
Right.
And I have two people who are teaching co-talk classes for inclusion, so they're representing the special ed population as well. So, I, I did, I did not have those two, so.
So, we've gone one for grade levels since you've been assistant superintendent?
Well, no, it was prior to me.
Oh, wow, so it's a long time, correct?
Yeah, it's, um, the last science adoption, I, that's the one I went back to.
Well, I remembered that.
Which was, is six years ago.
Some variety of things, at one time when we were still two buildings, it was important that we had a rep at each grade level so that we made sure both buildings were.
Right.
Talking and communicating.
And how many meetings do they typically have per year?
We go once a month, some of them are after school, some of them are half-days during the school day.
Right, because that's what I was questioning, if it's during school, then we have to get subs?
Well, yes.
For a half, how does that work, is it a half-day sub?
Yes.
Okay.
Years ago, it was a full day and then, uh, when I was in that position, I moved it more to half-days so that, and we really were careful with our substitutes.
Right.
Because many of them can't do basically K through twelve, depending on their license. And so, you would do a half-day sub and they would serve the middle school and high school in the morning and then over the noon break, then you would switch and then maybe.
Oh, yeah, that kinda makes sense if we do that schedule, yeah.
So, it's kind of a footwork. So, it is, it's cost-effective to do that.
Yeah, because when I see this and I think of all the sub fees.
Yeah.
It's kind of, you know, a lot to handle.
Any other discussion, questions? Call roll, please.
Mr. Venters.
Yes.
Mrs. Dunaway.
Teresa.
I know, I heard my name, um, yes.
Mrs. Dahl.
Yes.
Mrs. Heatherly.
Yes.
Mr. Spano.
Yes, that motion is approved.
Item L, approval to employ the following for athletic services for the two thousand eighteen nineteen school year, as per the agenda.
I'll move.
Second. Questions or discussion? Call roll, please.
Mrs. Dahl.
Yes.
Mr. Spano.
Yes.
Mrs. Heatherly.
Yes.
What?
Mrs. Dunaway.
Oh, yes.
Yeah, Missy. I didn't say your name for a reason. I'm trying to multitask, but obviously it doesn't work.
We were both waiting because it was not ordered.
And Mr. Venters.
Yes.
That motion is approved.
Item M, approval of enrollment of the following exchange student for the two thousand eighteen nineteen school year, as per the agenda.
I'll make a motion, second.
A motion and a second, Joanne and Teresa, any discussion?
Didn't they also do the one last year as well, the exchange student last year, same family? I thought they goes to last year too, okay, that's nice. Very nice, that's really nice.
Call roll, please.
Mrs. Heatherly.
Yes.
Mrs. Dunaway.
Yes.
Mrs. Dahl.
Yes.
Mr. Spano.
Yes.
Mr. Venters.
Yes.
Motion is approved.
Item N, approval of a two thousand eighteen nineteen bus schedule, subject to administrative review and appropriate revision.
I'll move, second.
I have a motion and a second, Corinne and Teresa, any discussion?
Just to add note that there is a hard copy available here at our board office and also it is online. And as per the revision, for example, we had a couple new enrollees Friday afternoon about one thirty, so those kind of revisions keep being added.
So, why do we have to approve that as a board, just curious? Uh, just because we do? Do we need to?
Yeah, you, you, we need to, we need to have it on record that it has been approved by the board.
Okay, I just, I just asked that, one, because I didn't know and two, it's something that's probably fluid and changes, just like you said, is that?
I think part of it is also the aspect of how far our buses go out, you know, believing the state criteria on that and that sort of thing.
Okay.
That if we weren't doing that, then that would be a discussion point that we have.
Okay.
Do we call roll?
Not yet.
Okay.
Mrs. Dahl.
Yes.
Mrs. Dunaway.
Yes.
Mrs. Heatherly.
Yes.
Mr. Spano.
Yes.
Mr. Venters.
Yes.
Yeah, that motion is approved.
Item Q, approval of the updated facility use fee schedule, adding the stadium rental fee.
I'll, I'll, I'll move, second.
Got a motion and a second, Corinne and Teresa, discussion? Call roll, please.
Mrs. Dahl.
Yes.
Mrs. Dunaway.
Yes.
Mrs. Heatherly.
Yes.
Mr. Spano.
Yes.
Mr. Venters.
Yes.
Motion is approved.
Item P, approval of contract and payment for Qualtrics first-year payment, is seventeen thousand five hundred.
I'll move. I'll second.
A motion and a second, Joanne and Corinne, any discussion?
I just highlight for our community that Qualtrics is a survey platform and that it has a great reporting mechanism with it. And something that we're excited about to really gain feedback on various aspects, whether it's a freshman engagement meeting with Dr. Ellis or whatever it might be. That amount is broken down across buildings and then the general fund also is the district can pay a portion. But each building is selected to use a portion of their budget to support this because they will be using it as buildings.
So, so we are using that to make decisions, right, we're using that.
Oh, the high school uses it a lot.
Right, we're using it throughout the district to make decisions.
And to inform decisions.
Right, and, and it ties back to the Dr. or Mr. Quinn's information about using data. So, this is the tool to obtain data, or one of which we're using. I think next month, we're going to be hearing from the high school students about orientation, they use this as a tool.
Yes.
Give us information about feedback on the effectiveness of that program.
Yeah, and Dr. Acump and I head up the climate and culture pillar and one of the staff members in our group is from the high school. And she said when they first started using it, she would go, oh, no, another survey and we don't ever do anything with the data. So, now, the teachers at the high school, I can't speak about the other employees because she's on my committee, she says they really look forward to it. They take these surveys and then they come back with the actual data, they look at it, they analyze it and they get excited to see it, how can we improve, what do we do right? So, it's been a really positive thing in that building for sure.
Most definitely. We've talked about Qualtrics several times, but we did not have resolution. So, it's, it's time to do requisition and I need to make sure we had a resolution.
Call roll, please.
Mrs. Heatherly.
Yes.
Mrs. Dahl.
Yes.
Mrs. Dunaway.
Yes.
Mr. Spano.
Yes.
Mr. Venters.
Yes.
Motion is approved.
Item Q, approval to purchase a two thousand nineteen Ford truck with a file package from Bold Townsend Ford with the purchase price of thirty-four thousand three hundred seventy-three dollars and fifty cents.
Motion?
I'll move. I'll second.
A motion and a second, Corinne and Joanne. We're, I'm assuming we're a replacement vehicle?
Gary?
This isn't my recommendation.
Oh.
All right, so, uh, it's my understanding, I, I can't say that it is a replacement to the fleet. What I do know, the piece I do know is that is through the EPC, the Educational Purchasing Council. And that is even with, because I ask local, I see it's local, but is that through our purchasing council because we do get a significant price break on that?
Oh, it was significant.
And this, and this does, it did fit into that, so I did inquire about that. I'm sorry, I did not ask if one of the older ones were.
I, I can tell you about this.
Okay.
This is for the basketball mechanic Greg Blessing to drive. He currently is driving a two thousand and two truck and Janie wanted to get him a newer truck. Supposedly we have a, a, an alternate truck that's on the lot, it's old, is it also a two thousand? It's a two as well. Yeah, and so, the thought was, the truck that he's currently driving, the two thousand and two that we do have, we would remove that one and sell it on gov deals. And put Greg's Blessing truck as the alternate truck and he would have a newer truck. Greg does use that for transportation to and from work as well. I mean, if he were to come in for snowplowing.
Sure.
That's there, so this is, Janie wanted to try to get him something newer.
Great.
Any other questions? Call roll, please.
Mrs. Dahl.
Yes.
Mrs. Heatherly.
Yes.
Mrs. Dunaway.
Yes.
Mr. Spano.
Yes.
Mr. Venters.
Yes.
Motion is approved.
Item R, approval of the attached two thousand eighteen nineteen agreement for the city of Tip City to provide police services for Tip City schools through August fourteenth, two thousand nineteen.
Need a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, Andy and Teresa, any discussion? Well, we did it last year, I mean, we gotta renew it every year and then the rates change.
I thought it was in the spring though, so I was like, wow.
Time flies, Teresa.
I know, I do, makes me feel like.
Call roll, please.
Mr. Venters.
Yes.
Mrs. Dunaway.
Yes.
Mrs. Dahl.
Yes.
Mrs. Heatherly.
Yes.
Mr. Spano.
Yes, the motion is approved.
Item S, approval of the following overnight and out-of-state trips. The high school cross-country meet at Michigan, and that's September thirteenth. The high school quiz team competition at White Cloud High School in Michigan, that's October the twelfth. The high school quiz team competition in Oak Ridge High School in Tennessee, that is October the nineteenth. The high school boys varsity basketball preseason game at Barnesville, Ohio, that's November the nineteenth. And AP history games break trip on November the twenty-ninth. And high school varsity basketball spring break.
Baseball.
Excuse, baseball, thank you. High school varsity baseball spring trip to Fort Walton, Florida, and that is March twenty-second in two thousand nineteen. And the high school varsity softball to Pigeon Forge, Tennessee, and that is March twenty-third, two thousand nineteen.
I'll move.
Second.
I have a motion and a second from Corinne and Teresa, any discussion? Call roll, please.
Mrs. Dahl.
Yes.
Mrs. Dunaway.
Yes.
Mrs. Heatherly.
Yes.
Mr. Spano.
Yes.
Mr. Venters.
Yes.
That motion is approved.
And item T, approval for any individual, excuse me, any team or individual that makes it to the final four or to any portion of the state tournament that requires overnight stay for the two thousand eighteen nineteen school year.
Need a motion?
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second, Joanne and Teresa, any discussion?
Often when we are in playoffs and we're moving in that direction toward finals, that as you find out whether you are successful and moving forward, we may not have a board meeting that would fall right at that time. So, this is a blanket approach that we have done prior due to just any state competitions or state qualifications.
Questions? Call roll, please.
Mrs. Heatherly.
Yes.
Mrs. Dunaway.
Yes.
Mrs. Dahl.
Yes.
Mr. Spano.
Yes.
Mr. Venters.
Yes.
Any other new business? All right, miscellaneous is next meetings, upcoming meetings, we've got a work session scheduled for Monday, September tenth, that'll be a six P.M. start. Our next regular Board of Education meeting will be September twenty-fourth at six thirty. The agenda items for the September tenth, the two that I'm aware of will be the, uh, facilities master planning associated with the building and the strategic plan. If you have other agenda items, please get a hold of Dr. Acump from one hundred and one. All right. Next item is executive session, I have a motion or a request for executive session to consider the compensation of the public employee or officials. Looking for, um, a motion, I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second from Andy and Corinne, any discussion? Call roll, please.
Mr. Venters.
Yes.
Mrs. Dahl.
Yes.
Mrs. Dunaway.
Yes.
Mrs. Heatherly.
Yes.
Mr. Spano.
Yes. All right, we will take a five-minute recess and then, uh, it'll be executive session, anticipated action?
I mean, it's a board decision, so.
There could be action as a result of this executive session.
I would say that we, we probably do it at the next meeting.
Oh, you're.